Call a meeting to order.
Yes, county minister.
I invite you to join me with the invocation.
Dear Lord, the month of May is a time of prayer for those that protect us. We pray and celebrate the veterans that have given so much in order that we may live in a country of free speech and a life of our choosing. We pray and celebrate law enforcement that protects us and our community. Most importantly, we celebrate the Lord, our great protector, with a day of prayer for our nation both here and nationally. Let us come together before God on this special day to show our unity in our country in a time of need for spiritual guidance shown to us by our Creator. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Second item on the agenda is approval minutes of the April 17th adjourn session, April 17th regular session, April 17th closed session, April 19th adjourn session.
Well, I read through them and since I wasn't here for part of that one since we were excused, I don't believe I can be the one that makes that motion.
I move with approval.
Motion by Councilmember Brambleton.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number three is to public hearing to consider the abandonment of an alleyway and adoption of ordinance 1711 to declare the alley closed. This was brought to us by attorney Mark Louder. And this is a public hearing. Mark, if you'd like to come forward and speak, and anyone else who wishes to speak, we'll be glad to hear.
Thank you. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. I am here as an owner of property, although I am an attorney, as you mentioned. We have an alley off of King Avenue, which is right across the street from the courthouse. And if you recall, several years ago, when Mayor Snyder was the mayor, he was working with the ADDC at that time, and they put a curbing behind my law building all the way to the next building behind. And the idea was for the King parking lot to be more permanent parking, so that they could, the employees of the surrounding buildings could park back there, and that would open up some of the parking on the streets. That was the idea anyway. So that worked. And the alley then became a dead end. You cannot get through there anymore. And in fact, there are signs up there, "You just cannot get through there." I do not know what use it could be of the cities right now, but it is very important to us and the handful of owners that own around this alley because that is our gateway for maintenance. Our maintenance trucks, our vendors, they come in there and they want to park if they have to take off tools and equipment. And we need to keep that open. I know in the back of the alley, Stacy Fulcher has HVAC unit, the Kings have an HVAC unit. That needs to be open because you can't get in into it from the other side anymore. And in my building, the old Stanley Hardware, I have double doors that open right up into the alley, which goes into a basement where I have my big boiler in. I bet y'all didn't know I had a basement. But, so all of our equipment is along that alley, and we need to keep that safe for us. And so that's why I'd ask that you relinquish your interest in that particular alley.
Counsel, have any questions? Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Move the public hearing to be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Move adoption of ordinance 1711 to declare alley closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to adopt ordinance 1711.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion?
That does, do we need in that motion that we still have the right to access of that alleyway in the future? I think that was in...
Are you talking about easement?
All it said in the, in our packet was that it had, the city has a right for future access.
Is it?
I thought it was.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance. I'm trying to find it though in the ordinance.
Very long, it's very in the...
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
It's within the ordinance.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number four is another public hearing to consider installment financing for the purchase of the Alamo Corporate Center. Mark, would you come up? Mark, correct me that this is another step that we need to take in order to go before the local government commission.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Anyone have any questions of Mark?
Actually procedural.
Yeah, Mark, okay.
Is that just procedural?
Right.
That's all we're doing is...
Mark, any comments you want to make?
This is just, you know, the funds that are, would be, that we'll obtain to purchase the land, pretty much.
This is a public hearing. Anyone care to speak?
Most of the closed public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under agenda adjustments, we've got multiple items that we're going to add to the end of the agenda. Five items, hmm, four items actually. One would just be a comment. One will consider a sewer adjustment, one will consider adding personnel to the closed session. One, we want to talk about the firearms and the gaming establishments. And five will be a discussion about development of a road off of 2427.
So, Your Honor, that's three to the...
Three to the regular and one to the closed.
So, no.
Do we need to do anything, maybe take any action on this?
Yes, sir. I would like to have a motion.
I move with...
Motion by Councilmember Brambleton.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under announced delegation, Melly Hall is Stanley County Library Director to request designating a handicap space on Second Street.
I'm just here to request a handicap designation, designated parking spot in front of the old City Hall Annex, now the new History Center. Most of the users of the genealogy collection and some of the volunteers for the museum are elderly and handicapped. The only handicapped spaces are in the Banks parking lots, and we would like to be a good neighbor to them and not be taking up their parking spaces. So we are asking for the parking space to the left of the planter box that sits in the street. There is a single space on that left-hand side right before you go into the Banks parking lot. We would like to ask that be a designated handicap space, and we'd also like to ask that there not be a time limit on that parking space.
Law doesn't allow time limits on handicap spaces anyway.
Okay.
And counsel may remember, we had this space designated as a handicap one time before and was removed basically after we saw that we didn't need any more since the City Annex was moved.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six, Adam Kiker, LKC Engineering, update on US 52 Water Treatment Facility.
Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Please excuse my voice, something must have bloomed this weekend that doesn't agree with me, but let me know if you can't understand or I need to speak up. Owen, can you, I never know when to, there we go. All right. So we wanted to come tonight and give you an update on progress at the 52 plant, talk about things that have been done in the last couple of months, and talk about things that are going to be coming up. We also have a list of some added changes that we've been discussing over the last, I'll say, several months. We are not requesting any action tonight. We just wanted to talk to you about where we are, both scope-wise and financially, and receive any feedback from you or answer any questions you have. So just real quick scrub of the financials. You're about 82% complete based on through March, that does not include the April payment request. Contractual completion date is still October of this year. There have been some improvements made in the last few months, so we, right now, that's looking like we will exceed that, but we are still waiting on some things to come up. The big thing that's important, the bottom bullet there, your last pair of filters that we were rehabbing, remember, remember we were doing, excuse me, doing those two at a time. Your last pair came online today, actually. So all eight filters are now operating with the new system. Something's not included in here, but I'm sure is of interest, the elevated tank repaint is scheduled for sometime between mid-June to end of July to start, and that'll be about 60 days worth of shrouding and painting when that goes, when that happens. A lot of things are tied to that tank that you would not think. The electrical lines that run right beside the legs are coming down as part of the project, but they're still powering a couple of items that are tied up in some other scope adjustments. And getting the telecommunications sorted out has also proven to be difficult. I have several pictures here. Haven't been a whole lot of big changes in the last, or at least exciting pictures to take in the last few weeks. This is one of your new pumps that sits out front on the concrete, concrete clear well. Of course, it's laying in the horizontal there, coming off the trailer. What you see there, the light blue is all below the water level, so this is really about the only time you'd ever see it. That's what it looks like when it's installed and running. This is the largest of your five high-service pumps, pumps that feed the distribution system from the plant. This came online in early March. So to the right, behind that metal column in this picture, is the next pump that we're working on replacing right now. Just some aesthetics, this is your new laboratory casework, which went in about a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, so you can see it's fully functional. All the plumbing and electrical items are completed, just a different shot showing the color scheme and the countertops. We picked a color scheme for the lab that matches the Terrazzo trim, which is, doesn't show up in this picture, but... Your filters, this is filter three or four, I don't remember, but this is a picture of the air scour system when there is no media in the bottom of the filter, so that's why this water's clear, and you can see the metal, the under drains underneath there. This is when they were testing it. This is again during a test. You'll see a later picture when it's in operation in just a minute, but you can see the clear water. This is the air scour boiling, as I'll say, the filter water during the backwash cycle. And this is what it looks like during an actual backwash when there's media in the filter. This picture was taken today, actually. You can, you can just tell, if you look at the difference between the two pictures, the coloration of the water, you can tell there's filter media in this picture here. So from a picture standpoint, that's all we have from, at least from an update of progress. Change order discussion items, as we talked about the last couple of times I was here, when we have scope adjustments or changes that come up, we look at those piece by piece and we track them based on the kind of order of importance. And of course, if you've seen, with the exception of the one large change order, each of the change orders you've considered have had multiple items on them, so that's kind of how we track them. As we're getting to the end of the job and we're starting to foresee completion, and we're watching the budget, we, Mike and I, with his help, we've divided all these items into three different priorities. Priority one is what we would consider pretty necessary, most likely, most of those items in priority one, you'll see, we really can't go without. Priority two are items that add value, that would help either, that value could be as easy or as simple as aesthetics, the more value could be operational. And then priority three are items that you could live without, maybe you want to budget for in a different budget year. So the way these fall out, of course, this is the one I'm sure that interests you the most, of course, it interests us the most. These are the items, this is the list of items that we consider most critical at this point in time. I would not say this is the only items, but these is what we have right now. So there are a couple of other items maybe that might hit this list in the, in the next four to six weeks. Priority two, I'll go through these, and of course, we can come back and discuss if you'd like. Priority two, you see on here, the changes to the elevated tank are on here as an item. And number one on that list here is an operational request that we're considering with Mike and his staff. And priority three are a little more, and you see number one there is kind of aesthetic. Number two is a, we actually are working on a way to get around number two and achieve the same goal. And number three is some scope items that likely could be pushed a few more years out, if so decided. From a financial standpoint, this is probably the most interesting. So as of right now, 352,000 in contingency remaining on the job. So I just gave you, and I believe this also is in your packet, just a list of, if you did all of priority one, if you did one and two, if you did one, two, and three, how that, the financials fall out. So the, the long story short here is if you did everything on our list, you would have 142, 143,000 in contingency remaining, based on what we know right now.
Would this bring us up to everything we know that's left with outstanding, or will there be more change orders coming?
Well, I think that as we've, I appreciate the question, and it's an important one. There are a couple of items that are not on this list that have come up in the last, since we put this together. They're not huge ticket items, but they're things that I would imagine will shuffle into that one or two list. For example, there's some valves in one of your side pump rooms that have been determined to not work. They can't close them, or they won't seat all the way. And do they have to be done right now? No, they've worked for 30 years probably, the way they are, but now that we know they don't work, do we want to invest the capital to correct them right now? So those are questions that we're, that we're considering. We're also making some, another answer, Mayor, another item, we're considering making some changes to the asphalt, the way it's, the site flows. That may result in a reduction, it might result in a slight addition, it depends on how we finalize the scope on that based on getting traffic, and mainly the large chemical trucks into and out of the site easier.
Sir, you are not asking for a motion tonight?
We're not asking for any, what we wanted to do tonight was come and answer any questions and let you understand the process and get a feel for what's out there, but no, sir, we're not asking for any consideration at this point. And we're not prepared to offer any, or accept any consideration.
One of the concerns counsel expressed, or one of our last updates, was that wanting to know all these multiple items, and so we felt inappropriate to come to counsel and give you an update, let you know where we are. And again, Mr. Mayor, to your question, it's all we know right now, but it is a 70-year-old facility, and we find things like valves not working and such. So we do our best to try to, but we wanted to make sure you understood the prioritization that we're trying to do with these as we come along with them.
Yes, ma'am.
Follow-up question, Adam. That little list that's over to the side, sidebar that may happen, did I understand you correctly that they would be probably priority one or two versus three?
Correct. Yes.
And I know this is probably not fair. If you were to calculate, how much, how much would those be? In other words, strike that, let me get back and restate that. Do we have enough in contingency to cover those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Even after what you have before us tonight, if those sidebars were still added into priority one or two, we'd still have money there?
Yes.
Okay.
Likely one, two, and three, but yes.
I just have one, just to follow up, and this is just a pet peeve of mine. I've got what is in the packet, the two pages of numbers, and none of the decimals seem to strike that. Not all of the decimals seem to be in line, and so I start wondering if numbers are missing a comma, are missing something throughout, throughout the process here. It's just me looking at decimals and looking at numbers. So I'm making the assumption that the total of the items on the first page, one, two, three, and four already approved, is that 948-514-48.
The, the only thing that does not fall in that nine, I'll toggle back just for a...
Okay. Thank you.
The one, and now I understand where you're coming from. The two items that are not in that 914, 941-393-18 are the bottom two on that top list, owner purchased equipment.
Okay.
Because those were not run through the...
Gotcha.
They were not run through the contract.
Yeah.
Right.
Name me the numbers.
They, those, those numbers, and you're looking at the 5206-80 and the 1914-50.
Okay.
Those numbers are, however, I'm going to toggle down again, apologize for the confusion, they are included in these calculations here.
Gotcha. And then on that same sheet, decimals are still not in line, and it got me messed up as to if, you see on the second, I'm just wondering if, if I was not reading something correctly, or if we needed to move something over, but...
I think that's a very good observation, and it, I think I'm like you, I like to see it, and it makes sense, and I will write, I will write justify next time, I assure myself.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
You and I had a little discussion one time before about your, what your employees ask us to consider out in front yard.
Yes, sir.
Is that what that is in this proposal?
Yes, sir. That is in the priority one items.
Changing those old lines that are so old.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In this, in this slide, items five, six, and seven, the detail A, B, and C, that's all included in there with what we were talking about.
What they requested.
Yes, sir.
Good.
That cleans up a lot of that spaghetti out in front of the, that underground spaghetti out in front of the, of the plant.
Some of these lower priority items are going to have to be decided on fairly soon? I mean, before some of the god-to-have stuff?
Actually, there's a couple of them that are probably going to be in there. Probably the biggest one is the concrete pads where the old bulk tanks were located, because that's going to tie into the paving and our methodology for getting trucks in with the chemicals. That's not a critical item right now, but that's one we'll probably have to decide whether it's going to stay on a three or, you know, elevate it up.
Once you've phoned up how to design that?
Right. A lot of, we're still waiting on, we're talking a lot with the chemical providers, they bring, the truck drivers actually, when they bring the trucks in, and trying to figure out what their best methodology is for getting in and out, what their preference would be, and then trying to see if we can accommodate that. If it looks like we're going to have to take out that, that bulk tank, or that pad that the bulk tanks were setting off, then we'll probably elevate it to a higher priority.
When do you anticipate coming back? Reason I ask, there's only one more meeting between now and June, when you're anticipating them to start on the tank. And one of the items in number two is the quest that counsel made about the logo, so you're going to have to know that when they start on that tank.
If, I would have to answer that if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think on the not tank-related items, we would try to get back before you at your June meeting, or your first meeting in June.
But we only have one in June.
Right, your only meeting in June, correct. That would, that would be our goal. Now, regarding the logo on the tank, we actually do not have to know that before they start on the tank. We have to know that before they start putting the finish coat on the bolt. So they will, can and will mobilize, get it shrouded, start on the inside, and they'll, they'll be five or six weeks in or more before they need an answer.
So we can do all that in June?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, and that gives us the opportunity to get up on the tank and actually get a good measurement of what the, the non-curved portion of the tank is, so that we can see really, I know we've done a lot of renderings and such, but this will give us some really good definitive information on what that logo would look like from certain distances away.
Counsel, have any questions on the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, your municipal calendar is in the agenda. Anyone have any questions?
I think, I think we agreed to 6:00 PM for our meetings in June, July, and August. Is that correct?
We did.
The calendar showed seven, so I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Moving on to the new business. Number eight, is to set a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit for Pfeiffer University at 245 East Main Street.
Move approval to set it for May 15.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Whitley to set the hearing for May the 15. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number nine is to consider a public hearing to consider TA 17003, including various sections of Chapter 92 of the city ordinance related to electronic gaming.
And we're setting that public hearing as well for May 15.
May 15.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes for May 15. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 10, consider award of a site restoration contract, Phase 1 Long Creek Wastewater Treatment Mr. Leonis is coming forward.
Big money man.
I think the item you have before you is just, this has been part of our intention or our long-term plans, is trying to reclaim some of the real estate. What we, what I wanted to get with you, let's see. Owen, can you help me out here? Well, one of the things, these are, there's two tanks, the, this project involves two, yeah, the site there. Where we're talking about is that great, that red clouded area, those are the two tanks we are trying to abandon, we're proposing to abandon. And what these tanks look like is basically, they have been abandoned, they've been filled with water. These are 20-foot-deep tanks. The picture you see, Owen, can you get me to the next one? I don't know how to... There. You can see these are 20-foot-deep tanks. 80-foot in diameter, Adam?
75.
75-foot in diameter. As you can see, this green and this nice green water is going to turn, get 20 feet deeper, and it's going to be yucky green. We've cleaned them out. This is trying to eliminate these vector attractions, these nuisance issues we have. Actually, when we cleaned this out, we did find some animal skeletons in there, so it's, we're trying to eliminate these kind of vector attractions. And it was, I believe the, it's in there, I believe it was 80,000, a little over 80,000.
88,47.
Yeah, I think, 88,47. And we did that by the informal bid process. I'm happy to answer any questions.
How did we advertise our bids?
It was an informal process, or with that type, we can go in and call vendors, make contact with vendors and solicit their bids.
Move approval award of the site's restoration contract to Lynn Thomas Grading in the amount of 80,847 and 82 cents.
Just a minute, please.
I'm sorry.
You're okay. Have a motion by Councilmember Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
It's considerably different.
Yes.
Considerably.
Number 11, presentation proposed fiscal year 1718 city budget.
Michael, what you been working on lately?
As the budget comes around, as you get a chance to look at it, make a few comments regarding the process, accomplishments, and things we've been able to do in the current fiscal year, and then, most notably, what's in the proposed budget. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for the opportunity to prepare the budget, and the faith and trust shown in me for having that responsibility. Also want to thank all of the city staff for the many hours of work at all levels. As my budget letter says, this budget preparation for the city of Alamo is just too large, too great for any one person, and we've got a lot of good employees that have spent a lot of time helping prepare this budget. Overall, this is the most difficult budget I've had to prepare as city manager. As we embark on many projects, it's made quite a challenge this year, and we'll talk about some of those challenges later, but, but those challenges come a lot of opportunity as well. To recap the current fiscal year that we're going to close out in the next couple of months, I'd like to make a few comments. We'll finish the current fiscal year by being able to fill, fulfill our financial obligations. We'll end the fiscal year with adequate balances and increasing balances in some case. I would describe fiscal year 1617, the current year that we're in, as the busiest and most aggressive with pro- and most aggressive with projects and initiatives, uh, that we've had in my, almost 22 years with the city. Uh, but we have a lot to show with it, for it, there's many accomplishments. Those accomplishments include the final contribution toward the central school project, acquisition of three police vehicle, vehicles, the completion of the Leonard Avenue and U.S. Business 52 Sidewalk Project, continuation of our utility pole inspection and replacement program, removal of several dilapidated residential structures, uh, construction on the Morehead Park Project, which includes many upgrades and enhancements and new, um, features of that park. Uh, we've got the major work that we just got talked, done talking about, than the U.S. Highway 52 Water Treatment Plant, and significant progress made toward the Streetscape Project. Uh, this fiscal year also anticipates seeing the acquisition of 282 acres for the service at home of the Alamooral Corporate Center, acquisition of a new building to serve as the headquarters for the Alamooral Police Department. Uh, we've also had the successful negotiation of a new solid waste contract at a reduced price for existing services, as well as the planned addition of residential curbside recycling. During this fiscal year, we also brought in-house for the first time the Main Street o, uh, office, that includes all the operations, the personnel, the budget. We've also implemented this year, uh, our first activities as part of the street, the new street maintenance program, which is designed to maximize the use of tax dollars and extend the life of our streets. Also seen the completion of the HVAC project at Amherst Gardens, and also made many needed repairs to the, uh, Tuckertown Water Treatment Plant, and made some telemetry improvements for increased efficiencies at Tuckertown. On the economic development front, I think our efforts continue to show their worth with the execution of the Pfeiffer project this fiscal year, the removal of the museum building by city forces, and the transfer of the property, uh, just about 10 days ago to Pfeiffer. Uh, fiscal year 16, 17 also saw two vacant industrial buildings, one on Old Charlotte Road and one on Poplin's Grove Church Road become utilized again with two new business additions to the city. So, that sort of wraps up and gives some highlights of the things we've accomplished in the current fiscal year. Uh, in terms of the proposed budget you've got before you, there's, of course, many challenges. We've got the ever-present challenge of, uh, increase in medical insurance costs, uh, limited revenue options for not just the city of Alamooral, but all cities, uh, overall and ongoing cost, rising cost of doing business. Uh, we do have a loss of some property tax base due to the hospital, uh, merger, and even with that, we're still able to present a balanced budget that will allow us to meet our financial obligations and to continue to provide the services that citizens expect. To hit a few highlights in each of the funds in the budget, as you know, uh, we've got a $66 million budget, but there are several funds and business enterprises in operation that are businesses within the, within the city that make up that entire amount. Uh, within the general fund, the budget does not propose any tax increase, with tax rate to remain at 59 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Uh, to put that into perspective, the police and fire department take 100% of all property taxes brought in by the city of Alamooral, and we would actually need about a 28 cent tax increase to fully fund those two operations with just property taxes alone. So, that underscores the need for a broad and stable revenue base for the city of Alamooral. That's no commentary on the services they provide, we, we glad to have them, they provide great services, that's just the realities of the businesses that we're in. Uh, this year was, is a revaluation year, and the revenue neutral figure for the city is 57 and a half cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. That figure factors in your average growth over the last four years, and it's a little bit complex calculation, but 57 and a half cents is the revenue neutral figure. It's worth noting that even in this revaluation year, our property tax base growth was less in this proposed budget year than what we actually saw the previous year, which, of course, was not a revaluation year, so that shows, um, I guess, the impact of some lost revenues and, and other things, but it's not a, uh, it's almost a business as usual year for the city in terms of, uh, of revenues. There are, um, reductions in fees proposed for the solid waste services. Overall, there's a net increase of $2.16 to those fees, uh, when you add in the cost of curbside recycling and electronics recycling that we'll begin to provide as a city service. But for existing services, before you add in, there's actually a net decrease, or it's a decrease, net increase because of the added services we'll provide. I'm not proposing any change in motor vehicle registration fees, or planning fees, fire inspection fees, or overall plan review fees. Some of the major, uh, highlights and notable items in the general fund budget is that, for the first time, we will pick up, or we anticipate picking up the payments for the Alamooral Corporate Center and for the, uh, police headquarters building, which in the 17, 18 fiscal year, uh, is approximately $258,000 in principal and interest payments for the two. Uh, we'll also continue our partnership with retail strategies in the upcoming year. They help us prevent leakage and lost revenues that not only benefit the city, but as we've recently discovered, for some local happenings, all of Stanley County's municipalities and the county government, uh, we will add, as I mentioned before, curbside recycling as a service, we'll add in-house electronics recycling collection, uh, we'll continue with the branding and Streetscape implementation, we'll remove some dilapidated structures, and we'll continue to strengthen our info, information technology infrastructure. Uh, in the Powell Bund, a Powell Fund, excuse me, there'll be a slight increase in funding for street maintenance and repair. The Water and Sewer Fund, there is a 4% uh, increase proposed, effective for July. For an average residential bill of 668 cubic feet per month, this equates to $1.61 per month. Um, according to the UNC Environmental Finance Center, this will still leave us with rates in the lowest 10th percentile of all statewide systems, as well as in comparison to systems of comparable size. Increase will help pay for our current obligations, uh, address the ever-rising cost of doing businesses, meet future needs, and keep our system, water system, safe, reliable, and in compliance. There are no proposed increases in water or sewer cap fees. Major initiatives in the Water and Sewer Fund will include the strengthening of our infrastructure, as I mentioned before, we'll add the, actually I didn't, but we'll add the principal and interest payments for the U.S. Highway 52 Plant Project, which, as we've all know, is a major overhaul of not only the building, but the water treatment processes within that building. We'll continue our in-house I and I work through the lining and venting of manholes and lines. We will, uh, fund the loan closing cost in the upcoming year for the Phase Two I and I Inflow and Infiltration Project. Uh, we'll fund a water and sewer rate study and have our normal equipment replacement program in place. In the Electric Fund, uh, there was no proposed electric rate increase. This marks the second consecutive year without a rate increase, and with rates holding steady, and that, of course, follows a year in which rates were reduced by the city. Major next initiatives will be continued upgrades to the electrical system, we'll have the bolstering of system materials and supplies to address both planned and unforeseen needs. We'll have routine equipment replacements, we'll continue with pole inspection and replacement programs, and right-of-way maintenance, all of which are contributing factors to the city's high reliability on the electric system and being awarded an RP3 Diamond Level City. In the Solid Waste Fund with the landfill, no increases for tipping fees, that being municipal solid waste and construction and demolition. There are no proposed changes to the $1 per ton fee to cover closure and post-closure costs. Of course, the major initiatives in the upcoming year will be the construction of the landfill leachate line, that's scheduled for completion in the upcoming fiscal year, and the employee office, facility, employee and office facility is also scheduled for construction in the upcoming year. Payments for both of these projects are included in the budget. Uh, we also plan to replace the lines in the land, from the landfill cell to the leachate pond, and this will allow for gravity flow of the leachate and eliminate the need for pumps, thereby reducing opportunity for problems and saving costs on electricity in the landfill fund. Overall, the budget does provide for a 1.5 cost of living increase, 1.5%, cost of living increase for employees, that this helps salaries keep pace with the cost of living, as well as keeping our pay ranges competitive. There's also a 1% pay adjustment in lieu of merit. Um, as we discussed before, there's been no merit opportunity for city employees in over a decade. Overall, the budget reflects a 4.3% decrease from the current year, current fiscal year budgeted authority. Copies of the budget, uh, will be made available to the local media tonight, and copies will be made available for public inspection at the city hall, the Alamooral branch of the Stanley County Library, and on the city's website. Overall, I'd like to thank the Mayor and City Council for all your various planning priority sessions and all your hard work throughout the year. I particularly wanna note, uh, and say thanks for the, um, engagement of First Trial Financial Advisors, they've been a tremendous asset and have allowed a city to develop a roadmap to move forward with projects we've discussed for years, and I don't know without that assistance that we would be moving forward with some of these projects. I think it's a very wise move on the city's part. Also, I'd like to thank, uh, staff as a whole, and particularly Colleen Conroy, Finance Director, Christina Alfen, Assistant City Manager, and Matt Smith, Assistant Finance Director. It's been an extremely difficult, challenging budget to prepare, uh, but it's reassuring as we were trying to balance the budget and make sure we were getting the most out of the process, to know that these three individuals were working as hard as they could to do the same, and having their eyes on the budget and their efforts thrown in this process is giving me comfort in knowing that we've done the best that we are doing to present a balanced and fiscally responsible budget that meets the needs of our citizens and fulfills our obligations. So, uh, from here, council can set a public hearing for May 15th on the budget, and just a reminder that we have budget work sessions in the executive conference room at 6:00 this Thursday, the 4th of May, and Monday, the 8th of May.
I think on behalf of the council and myself, thank you, and thank you to all the staff who have worked hard to get us to this point. Counsel, I'd encourage you to try to look through this budget as much as possible and start developing your questions-
Between now and Thursday.
-as we start Thursday night going through. We'll be going through, uh, each budget, and Michael will have the highlights there, and we'll talk about them all at that point, but you can see some of the questions you may come up with between now and then, and have them ready so he can address them between the, the, the Thursday and the Monday meeting, if at all possible. I would entertain a motion that we set the public hearing for May the 15th.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember, who was it, Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, does any council have any questions at this time?
Just follow-up. Um, so, revenue neutral is 57.5, is that correct?
Correct.
And, might need to talk about that, but maybe not right now, about what that really means, 'cause I think that might be of a concern to, to council, we may probably talk about that more at the meetings. I think for folks who hear this, or read what Shannon might write, or hear what Leon might say, the net change because of recycling will be $2.16 a month per residence, is that correct?
That's correct, that covers residential curbside recycling and residential electronics collection and recycling.
And tra, and regular trash, and the whole nine yards-
Right.
-what we've had, and leaps, and limbs, and the whole nine yards. To that, I would ask that if we're doing this, today is May 1st, if we're starting this July 1st, when is our recycling education going to start, so that when July 1st comes and we have that second rollout there to people who've not been doing it, when are we gonna start that? And that might, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, 'cause it's something we've gotta have a plan for-
Right.
-and people have gotta know it's coming. Just, and that might be something that you talk to folks about, and we have an answer for later this week.
I and Christine are working with Waste Management, do you want to answer that now, or you will give us an answer Thursday?
What was that question?
When are they gonna start sending out their information for education on recycling?
Yeah, I'll answer it Thursday.
Okay.
They've, they've actually already started some of it with, um, I don't matter if there's anything in the bill stuffer or not, but I know Waste Management's had some articles in newspapers as, as a start.
That's fine. And again, I've got, we've gotta realize that newspaper reading, not sorry, is really down, we've really gotta put an emphasis on that, because people, if they're not used to it, need to get used to it, and if they're used to the pink cans, they realize that's not gonna happen anymore.
Right.
Second thing is dashboard when it comes down to water and sewer. I think what I heard you say, that I think we've gotta really swallow hard on and be proud of, is that if we look at other towns and cities who provide water and sewer, if you go on there and do a comparative study, currently, we are still way below what everybody else, well, most of them are, and even with this increase to an average household of $1.61, we'll still be lower, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And within this budget year, we've picked up about, in the Water and Sewer Fund, about $552,000, which is the combined principal and interest payment for the, uh, Highway 52 plant.
Okay.
So, we've still been able to do that.
And lastly, it's something I, and I'm not throwing you under the bus, I'm just making this statement, um, whenever CHS took over a lot of the medical offices here, and we lost that pot of money, and we lost a lot of money when CHS did that.
Fifteen million.
That's exactly right, a lot of money. Um, I know you were checking with, might be, other counties to see if CHS puts money into those budgets in lieu of, and at some point, at, maybe at one of our budget meetings, we'll have the answer to that.
Sure.
Thanks. Thank you.
Counsel, have any further questions? Hearing now will move on to item 12, consider proposal from Convergent Nonprofit Solutions to perform a feasibility study for fundraising for Wiscasset Sport Complex. I think you all discussed that at the meeting, I missed the planning board, but there was no action taken. Uh, the proposed price is 23.5, and if council wants to move forward that, I need to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion?
Mayor, do, do we need to go ahead and include some extra for the plus-travel expenses lodging, or will that come back to us on a case-by-case basis, or?
I think we need to wait on that, we're trying to get a little help with that.
Trying to.
Hmm. And also, is that, is that out of the funds that are already designated?
Yes, it's already in the budget.
Current budget.
In the-
Sixteen.
In the project budget.
Project budget.
And this is the feasibility study?
That's all we're doing, is feasibility study, see how to move forward.
Okay. We should have the reports that are underway back.
Uh, they should be, hopefully, at the next meeting, I hope we have that. We're gonna be meeting with them in between, I hope we're ready to present something at the May 15th meeting, I hope. Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Number 13, to consider the approval of Department of Public Housing's fiscal year 2017 Agency Plan Annual Update. Is Cedric here, Cedric?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, Mr. Ferris. What you have before you is Department of Public Housing's annual update to their, to our, um, five-year agency plan. On an annual basis, we have to compare our policies and procedures that we have in place with new HUD regulations that may, they may have, uh, presented, uh, through, for the year, and in doing so, we did find that we had to update a couple of policies where HUD had changed some definitions on the way they, um, have their definitions written, and to, in order to remain in compliance with HUD regulations, we had to make those updates as well. Um, what you'll find is, for public housing, we all, we had to update our definition for... update our definitions on the use of social security numbers. Um, it allows applicants to become participants, even if the family lacks the necessary documentation for members who are under the age of six. Um, it used to be, and our policy, that if you didn't have the, uh, hard copy of your social security card for your kids, then we couldn't offer you a unit until you had that proper, uh, documentation. Now, uh, HUD allows us to give a 90-day, um, grace period for you to get that information into us, and so we can go ahead and offer you a unit. Um, you just have 90 days to present, um, that documentation to us.
You need, um, for Owen to put this up on the screen for you?
Um, you, he can if he, if he need to, that'll be fine. Yeah. And also, um, the social security number, uh, information, it goes for our public housing and our Section 8 program. HUD also made changes to their definitions of extremely low, um, income. HUD also made changes to their definitions of extremely low income. It takes, now it takes in consideration the federal poverty level into account when determining if a family fits that category. Also, they changed the, some wording in their earned income disregard. They used to give a maximum of 48 months that a family could disregard income. They changed that to 24 months, and so we updated our policies to reflect HUD policies on that as well. They also changed the information regarding calculation of rent for mixed families. What mixed families are, if there's a individual within the family that is not a citizen, and they also have an individual that is a citizen, a mother who's not a citizen, but she had a child who is considered a citizen of the United States, that considered a mixed family. What that does, they have changed the way that, the methodology of calculating the rents. We use flat rents now instead of maximum rents, what would be, what their maximum income would allow their rent to be, but instead of using that, we used our flat rents that we have established for public housing. So we also updated our policies to reflect that as well. On the Section 8 side, a different policy that we had to update as well was, we would be excluding mandatory education fees from income. For example, athletic scholarships and things like that, that wouldn't be considered a person's income anymore. At one point, they were. So we updated our policies in our Section 8 program to reflect that. Also, utility payment schedule is going to require PHAs to use the lesser of the size of a unit actually leased by the family or the voucher size issued. What that does, if there's a family that qualifies for a two-bedroom voucher, but they were able to find a three-bedroom home that fit the pricing of a two-bedroom voucher, when we're doing our utility reimbursement, we would, instead of looking at the actual unit they're in, we would go by the lesser of the two, the two-bedroom voucher or the three-bedroom size. So in that case, we would look at the voucher size, because it's lesser of the two. Those were basically the updates that we needed to make as far as policies and procedure-wise. And looking at those updates, they didn't have many residents that it would affect. And I did fail to mention that we did have a public hearing for this on April 25th. We did do a 45-day review of the agency plan and notice of a public hearing advertised in the Stanley News and Press, and also in our office where we held that for review, for comment. At that meeting, the attendance was moderate. As far as comments, there were very few comments. And also, we also presented our 2017, fiscal year 2017 capital fund plan. And what that included was, we let them know that we would be upgrading our housing software and that we would start to look into construction and renovation of our Family Life Center. And then going on within the plan, we also discussed the next five years, what we also would be looking forward to trying to do within our capital fund, which is replace interior and exterior doors at both sites, replace hot water heaters at both sites, complete some landscaping renovations, and replace the office computers. And that was the overview of what our capital fund program, we're hoping to complete within the next five years with our capital fund program. With that information being presented, we asked that council consider approval of our annual update, and upon approval, there are two certifications, a civil rights certification and a compliance certification that the mayor would have to sign and we would have to submit to HUD, saying that we went through this process and that council has approved us to make these updates to our policies and our capital fund program.
About a week or two ago, HUD passed a new rule that would not allow smoking in any apartments. Are we all ready that way?
We are not. They gave, in February, when they rolled out that rule, they gave us 18 months to get into compliance with that. We have started to do some of the groundwork in making that a reality for us. We've put out some surveys to our residents, just trying to get a feel of how many residents smoke, how many don't smoke, what type of policies and procedures they would like to see. HUD gave us guidelines on how to implement those, this no-smoking regulations, and that was one of the things that they did ask us to do to make sure that we are surveying our residents, and so we have started that. Within, we're doing our reexamination project, reexamination process now, and in that process, we're, that's when we're doing the survey of, you know, do you smoke? If you do smoke, you know, how do you feel about not smoking on the inside? Would you rather it be no-smoking on the premises at all, smoke-free campuses and things like that? So once we get all that information back and tally up some of the results, we'll know how to proceed with making our policies and procedures.
Thank you very much for going ahead and starting that. I didn't want it to be a last-minute surprise. I'm glad you're going ahead and starting.
So is the federal policy, is it a mandate or optional?
It's not optional. If you're going to operate a public housing program, you're going to, you're going to be pretty much mandated to make sure inside, smoking is banned.
It's just internally on the inside of the apartments, the way the new federal policy is written, or is it include the exterior of the properties?
Right now, in their regulations, they have 25 feet away from any doors or windows.
And Mayor, may I follow up? I'm glad that you're doing that. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned, okay, and I hate to say, that might be too strong, that you're putting it out there to the residents. You know, we are a no-smoke building, and most public buildings are, and it is, it's an honor to be in public housing, okay? Because there are so many people in line. I would say that we need to say, this is the way it's going to be. And if you can't, I mean, I'm really, you know, they go into restaurants and you can't smoke, they go into this building, they go to the hospital, they go to the schools. You know, I'd say do it, and I would love to implement it faster than slower than the 18 months.
Now, if I gather what the survey is, you're not giving them option inside. You're asking where to do the grounds and everything. You're asking for their opinions to make the entire campus.
Exactly, exactly. We're not giving them an option of, can you smoke inside or not?
No, I understand that, but I still say, I'm a, I mean, I'm still saying, listen, it's one of, if you're going to have one of our, you're going to not smoke inside, you're not going to smoke within, on the property. I mean, at the hospital, if you go to the hospital, you'll see them on Hawthorne, standing in the road on Hawthorne, because they can't be on the property smoking.
Yeah. And what happened is with HUD, they let, rolled out some guidelines. They had some PHAs that went on their own to implement it before the whole regulations, and they found that that was the best way of making it more smoother transaction, because we have some people that have smoked in their units for forever, and it's going to be, it's going to be a chore to get them to understand that it's not that way anymore. So that was the best way that they said to do it, to make sure that we're having regular meetings and bringing it up in meetings and discussing and offering cessation classes and things like that. So we'll do all of that things, all those things that HUD have gave us as guidelines to do, to make sure that it is a smooth transaction. But we're looking to, our implementation will be July 1 of next year.
That's sound.
I like your process for gradually transitioning them.
It's why coming off has got to be gradual. Most people kept cold turkey.
I understand that, I guess.
Any other?
I'll entertain a motion that we approve the annual.
I still have, I still have one question. Capital, we have talked about a Family Life Center.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I miss it?
No, it's in there. It's part of our 2017, but what we'll be doing for 2017, we'll have starting architecture. We'll come and do some, some plans, some layouts to see what's in.
Sure, it's phase one.
But he didn't, I didn't hear it, and I, and I just think it's been, we've heard that. We've heard it after we finished the HVAC, using it, okay, we've heard it.
It is the next big project.
That's what I wanted to hear that.
That will be formed. And. Has that phased out over a number of years?
It will be phased out.
In the budget. Motion to approve agency plan?
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 14 is ordered 1712 to amend the Leonard Avenue Sidewalk Project Budget. You have the information in there and the reason and the request. I'd entertain a motion to approve 1712.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 15 is the North Carolina Department of Transportation, non-highway projects, considering a letter of support. This is the sidewalk projects that are in the SDIP that are in the second five years of the next 10-year plan, so we're asking, they're asking for letters of support if we want to see that, and I think we definitely want to see that. We've always wanted a sidewalk to the high school, and that and along 52, I think, would very much help our community, so I think I'll entertain them. Yes, ma'am?
I think it should be Park Road, not Park Lane. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is. That, what, high school?
No.
It's Park Road.
It's Park Ridge.
No.
Park Ridge up to Park Road.
Right, but it says, I think, in there, Park Lane.
Good catch.
No, it goes up to Park Lane, right?
Say that again?
Doesn't it go up Park Ridge to Park Lane?
I'm saying it should be Park Road.
Park Road.
It says Park Lane.
Good catch, Martha.
Park Lane's off McHugh.
Yeah, that's right. Park Road's where I live.
I entertain a motion to approve.
With, with the amendment.
Motion to approve the letter of support.
Motion by Councilmember Whitely.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 16, Consider Resolution to Adopt the Street Assessment Fees for Physical Year They are in your agenda, and there is very little change since last year. In fact, it came down just a little bit, I believe.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitely. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number, number 17 is a Cash Management Investment Policy. This made some corrections or suggested changes during our audit process. This brings us into compliance with his recommendations. And does council have any questions for Mr. Ferris?
The only thing, I would, I would want to make sure, and I couldn't figure it out, that no local financial institution is eliminated from participating because of our rules.
No. They all have an opportunity to bid when we do something.
So the major change in here with the audit, came from the audit about cash handling and that type of thing.
As you know, we had a new auditor this year, and I think anytime you change auditors, sometimes they see something they'd like you to change, and we have done that and changed that, and this puts it into policy.
Just wanted to make sure there wasn't something else that I missed.
No, it just, it also brings it up with, you know, best management practices, as the mayor said, you do things for years and years, and all of a sudden, somebody says, hey, this isn't the way to do it anymore, so you just continue to evolve and adapt. And a lot of these things that are in here, we actually already have them in place, because they're best management practices and the way that things need to be, and this is just a way to now formalize, you know, some of the changes that have occurred over time.
I think his state, I think his statement reflecting changes to best management practices just says it all right there.
Further questions?
Only, we have a tremendous amount of cash at a given time, and I'm just curious as to how much, on an annual basis, how much interest do we get off that money?
It is very little right now, because the percentages are so low. Ms. Conroy, I don't know if has a figure or not, but.
It's actually in the budget, some of those figures, and we can cover those in the next couple of nights when we talk about revenues, but it's.
Got you.
Minimal.
It is minimal right now, unfortunately.
You couldn't even hear.
Further questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Whitely. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number 18 is to Request a Road Closure for the Law Enforcement Memorial Service. We've had this many years, and it'd be held there at the square.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number 19, Consider Declaring a Surplus, Missalamiya Scrap Metals and Equipment from Public Utilities.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 20 is Information, Schedule of a City Council Facility Tour on May 10th. Anyone else wants to go, please let Mr. Ferris know. I think he's arranged for, go ahead, Mr. Ferris.
I was going to say, several of you at the last meeting said you'd like to participate, or a couple meetings ago, we discussed this, but now that we have a firm date, time, and schedule, I just wanted to get ahead, council officer, we're providing lunch, so if any of you are aware, let me know now, and if you're not, if you're uncertain.
Who's going?
Yes, who's going? You know, Councilmember Bramlett's going, Councilmember Whitely.
I wish, but can't that date the whole day.
I'll have to let you know. I don't think so, but.
I'll let you know also.
Okay.
Are we going to work Central School into this, to the auditorium?
We can go over it anytime you want to. We have keys.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we should do that, should we do that before a council meeting?
Sure.
Oh, central auditorium?
Yeah.
Maybe down on the 15th.
Does that work?
Do whatever you want to. I will tell you, Owen is working right now on the bids to try to get it ready to do the audio upgrade, so it might be a little messy right this minute, but I mean, it's, you can walk through it. Our electrician has just finished putting in some of the conduit. Council wants to set a time, we'll be glad to make arrangements. You don't have to do it tonight, you can talk about it at the workshop.
Workshop.
Workshop aside. We can do that, too. 21, Reminder, the employee picnic is May 3, 11 to 1. It will be at City Lake Park, weather permitting, and it does, at this point, look good, so I encourage you to stop by and visit with the employees for a little while if you possibly can. Number 22, Reminder, the Stanley County Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast is next Monday morning at 7:30, May 8, at the E. Waddell Center. I think, you already got tickets?
Everyone's registered, and I think the way this one works is you just sign in or mention, say your name at the door, and I think everyone is registered. There may be one, maybe, but it's a fairly nominal cost, so we registered everybody.
Okay. All right, couple add-on items we talked about in the adjustments. Sewer water adjustment, this is a sewer adjustment at the E. Waddell Center. I think it's just basically common sense. We do it for the public when they came in, come in, but since it's us, staff does not feel comfortable doing it for ourselves without council's approval. We've had a leak over there, it did not go down the sewer system, it has been repaired. Typically, staff can even take care of some of this, but we want to get council's approval on this, so.
You want a motion?
And if you feel that your motion should say that the city manager has authority to do this in the future, you can make it that way.
So moved. With the Waddell Centers and with that clause about the city manager, particularly when it's, I mean, it's our properties.
Water and sewer adjustments.
Water and sewer adjustments, right.
Manager connect.
Yeah.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, I understand you had some discussion at the planning board meeting about the restrictions we put on the gaming, electronic gaming at 52 North. One of them talked about firearms, which said firearms are illegal unless it is in violation of state or federal law. I think you had some in, discussion about removing that from the restrictions.
Where's, is Kevin here?
If.
He was.
If that is your intention, we need to take action because no action was taken.
And we were actually waiting, I chaired that, we, we did not make, we just were depending on Kevin, is Kevin here?
He was.
Oh, he was. Kevin was going to look at that because what, you know, basically, if we go back, I went back and watched the video.
Yeah.
A number of times for that night's meeting. And Kevin, when he said, hold on just a minute, let me make sure I've got all this clear of what we need to put in this ordinance, he went through this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and then he said the issue about guns, and then he had in there, and I can't exactly what it said, but not excluding what the state, what state statute may or may not allow. Kevin was going to bring as a result of that meeting with the planning and zoning board, he was going to work up, as I understand it, the changes that needed to be in that and present it to us, and somebody help me if that's not what you all remember.
That's what the public hearing for 15. That will be as part of the new electronic gaming that he wants us to adopt, where there's not, everyone of them does not have to come to council, that's part of what we just set a public hearing for earlier.
Right.
But this is backing up to the one we've already done.
Okay.
So if, if that was your intention, we need to take action.
Okay.
I personally don't think it's, it was a, an issue because it clearly said in the restrictions, as long as it was not in violation of state or federal law.
That's what we talked about that night at the planning meeting, was with regard to the changes to the ordinance that we're going to get on 15.
But John, what's.
Motion to go ahead and.
If you want it taken out of the restrictions on that up there, then we need to do that. Just to clarify.
I'll make that motion.
If you want to do that. Motion by Councilmember Whitley.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And then when you get the public hearing on the 15th, Kevin will have them restrictions written out for you, but since we had it on that one, you just need to clarify where you intended to have it in around.
Yeah, I think that's all we talked about, that one, it was the changes to.
At the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before, we discussed sharing with Gus Shad a study, a traffic study for the property over next to the park on Highway 2427. He has since come in with some basic designs of the road that would go in on that property, and staff has asked him to take that road, or at least consider taking that road all the way to city property, which would be to our benefit. So Mr. Shad is asking, would we consider helping pay for the last little portion that goes to our property rather than him funding it all? And I don't think it's a reasonable request that we, we get a little bit of involvement in it, because we are going to, we are going to benefit from it. It's going to our property, and hopefully will help us market that for a future development of some kind. So I think it would be in order to, if council so desires, to put some kind of monetary figure that we would be willing to give to Mr. Shad upon completion of the road to our property. And that should probably include the money, all in one motion that we did for the study, make one figure for all of it combined, if council so desires.
Question.
Ms. Hall?
So if you're thinking, we did not actually, if I remember correctly, we did not actually come up with a specific guaranteed amount the last time, we said we were going to do it a third.
A third of the traffic.
Of the total, which may be between 12 and $20,000, is that about what we?
We would do a third of that.
But that was, there was no guaranteed number.
No, there was no number guaranteed at that.
If we go back now and to say that we, at the completion with the road going all the way to our, to the city property, that we would include both the study and the road completion, no more than $20,000.
Total.
Total.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Well, we.
Let's get, so moved.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Hall that we approve up to $20,000 to go for this development of the road. At the completion of the road, we would pay that amount to the developer since it will connect with our property and would be to the city's benefit.
Okay.
Second is Ms., Councilmember Hughes, further discussion.
Quick question, the study, when will the study be finished?
I would expect the study to be done in the next couple of weeks or so.
When will the road be finished?
That's hard to say. It may be.
Are we going to wait to pay our part of the study until the road's finished?
I put a cap of, my suggestion was, and the motion is a cap of 20.
If you all.
I would think if you're, if you want to pay the study separate, I have no problem with that, but we need to amend the motion. Right, and the motion is we will pay it when it's complete.
If, if council wants, I will amend the original motion to say a max of $20,000 for both studies, at the completion, strike that for both parts, at the completion of the study, that portion can be paid at a third, with the remaining of that $20,000 going to the road, if that's what council wants.
That's clear.
All right, I got a motion to amend it by Councilmember Hall, and you'll amend, it's a motion, second by Councilmember Hughes, Mr. Ferris.
Okay, I understand that everything above a third of the traffic impact analysis can go toward a road up to $20,000.
Total for both.
Total for both. So I guess my question is, the 20,000 total, what part of the road are we paying for? Are we paying a share of the entire road, or just the end section from where he'd be required to build it to the end? Because that, there's that up to amount, what are we, you know?
We're, we're agreeing to give him up to $20,000 for the project if he takes it all the way to our property. Yes, if he builds it, otherwise, he doesn't have to go all the way against our property, but his hat does have to go to property, his property line. So we're asking him to go a little further and take it all the way to our property, and we're agreeing to give that a little bit of extra money to do that.
From where he wanted to stop the road and to our property line, about what percentage of the road is that?
I've answered the same question.
It's hard to say by that drawing. He actually wanted to stop it all the way back at the tower originally, and if that was the case, it was almost a third of the road. But we're asking him to go all the way to his property line at a minimum, but we would also like to take it on around and curve it back into our property, which is the extra we're asking him to do.
So if the whole road from 2427 to the back property line is, say, $20,000, we're obviously not paying more than a third, or a half.
Oh, the project's considered to be over $150,000.
Okay, so at $150,000, we'll probably just.
We'll be paying.
Reach the max.
We're just paying up to the 20.
The 20, okay, I got you.
Yes, it's considerably more than our 20 that we're offering to put in.
And that was just a number.
Further discussion?
Number out of the air.
Discussion.
Number out of the air.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, I believe that's all the add-ons, start going around. Mr. Ferris had put on here also, just to remind council one more time, that the museum property has transferred to Pfeiffer now, so Pfeiffer is the owner of that. They are in the process of completing their plan for the building design, there have been multiple meetings, and I would anticipate them coming up with their final design to the HRC in the very near future, and we will move forward with that. I would like to say thank you to our city staff and all the citizens who came last Monday night and made an appearance at the county commission meeting for the sales tax distribution discussion. I think those people showing up and being heard, or at least being present, made a major impact on their decision. And I also want to say thank you to the county commissioners for leaving that decision as it has been now 40-plus years, probably. Mr. Ferris?
I do not have anything else there.
Mr. Townsend?
Just one, one clarif, item I need clarification on from, I think, I forgot what meeting we was at with the school board last week, whenever they had the discussion about school resource officers, did they make, take formal action to stop our officers from doing?
That's actually on their, their upcoming, they said they were going to put it on their upcoming agenda.
They didn't take action on that.
They didn't take no action and didn't even make a recommendation, they said they were going to discuss, they wanted, so I don't know where that, when that'll be on their agenda, it may be on their agenda tomorrow night, I do not know.
Okay, all right, that's all.
I would like to thank those individuals that attended our education workshop last Thursday. I know everybody's got a busy schedule, but we as a council appreciated the input from, we had retired teachers, current teachers, parents, it was a good turnout, and I thought we got some good information from that session, and hopefully we can come up with the action, action items, that's all.
When we get that in, I think we should hold another public meeting, and I think that was discussed at our meeting the other night, we would hold another public hearing and tell everybody what was recommended and go through it. And let me back up just a minute to what Mr. Townsend said, I want to make sure nobody misunderstands. The discussion at the school board was whether to change the security for their meetings from the city. It did not really pertain to just the school resource. We, so right now, we supply extra duty at their, their school board meetings, and they pay that officer individually. They were discussing where to change that, not to change the school resource officer program, so I want to make sure nobody gets confused about that. Mr. Aldridge?
Just a couple of things, first of all, I'm sure some of you may have ridden by out on Highway 740, right there where the connector comes out, and seen that new auto dealership coming to town, so that's another, another positive for, for Albemarle and Stanley County, it's another building that's going to be utilized, and auto dealership coming, and I think it's a Chrysler Jeep Dodge store out there, so that's, that's always a, you know, a good, a good sign. Second thing, just want to make a comment about the, the streets uptown, looking really good, getting a lot of comments about that, the additions, the been, the crosswalks have been painted, and the, the work's been done at the square, creating a lot of good conversation in the, in the community, that's it.
The property you talking about right behind the middle school, is that where you're talking about?
Now, he's actually talking about the former builder, Mark Building, there's been no formal announcement on that, it's a reason they don't have any publicity, but he is correct that someone looking to do that.
Former building.
There's a sign up there now, it's.
There's a big.
A sign?
I would expect probably a formal release in the very near future. Ms. Hall?
And back echoing, not necessarily just the education meeting, whatever day that was, Wednesday, was it Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, throughout the day that day, Mark and, Mark had several strategic planning meetings that several folks in the community were part of, and I appreciate people doing that as well. Would tell you that along my tours of going to other towns to see what they've got going on, if you, if you all are in Gaston County, I would encourage you to go over to Bessemer City. Bessemer City today is nothing like Bessemer City was five years ago. They are booming downtown, booming for a little place downtown, and a Saturday afternoon and a Saturday evening might have had 6,000 to 8,000 people downtown two weeks ago. They have an amphitheater downtown where an old building was now, they've got, oh, it is just phenomenal. They were having, they're having bands every other week from the second weekend, April through September. Bessemer City, little Bessemer City with 5,000 people, 5,500 people. And I look at our new Parks and Rec director in the back, I ask them, I said, so where's this money coming from? And they said it comes straight out of Parks and Rec. So, you know, we've got, we have got, I mean, we've got all kinds of places we could do that, but they've got this wonderful amphitheater downtown, so I continue to say we've got to look at ways to draw folks to our downtown, or draw folks to our community to spend their money and to spend their time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dry?
I'm good, you're up. Just a couple of quick things, a couple of things I'll mention about education committee meeting, or education meeting, and those strategic planning meetings, so I just wanted to mention again the survey that's on the website, the strategic planning, because I think in the past couple of weeks, more people are beginning to watch these meetings, since I've heard a lot of people say, I went back and looked at poll meetings, so I think, you know, so I wanted to mention that in case anyone at home has not taken it, and it's still available and probably through this week, I would imagine, if you haven't, haven't done that. Look forward to staying up late the next couple nights, looking at this, the budget. Does anybody know when the E. Waddell windows?
They are waiting on all of the windows to come in, part of them are in, talked to them last week, but the rest of them have not come in, so they were hoping within the next three weeks or so, but there's no guarantee that the rest of the windows come in.
All right, I was, I just keep riding by there and.
Right.
That's all.
Mr. Bramlett?
I really hate to belabor a point, but we're going way out on a limb, we just approved $1.8 million to buy 280-some acres for a corporate center, and I may be totally wrong, but I don't think so, that will be a failure with the school system that we have in Stanley County right now. We will not get any meaningful businesses located in Albemarle if that business is going to bring in people who are sensitive to the kind of education that their children get, and the kind of education their, the children of their employees get. I think we've taken a giant leap forward with our, even bringing it up for discussion, but I don't have a lot of confidence in what our school board might do right now, and I'm just, I'd hate to be in Mark's shoes to try to market that thing to people that are going to come in here, that would come in here with the kind of schools that we now have. I think that these four points that our group came up with the other night would go a long way to, to help that, but, but I, I just, you just want to throw up your hands when you look at, at the situation in our school system right now, and what, what, we've got over 1,000 students homeschooled, we got all the private schools, we got Greystone, we wouldn't have all of those if we had a decent public school system. So I, I just beg everybody to keep your ear to the ground, keep, keep pushing on this issue, we've got to have better schools in Stanley County. Thank you, Mr. Naeh.
I think we've identified with that meeting the other night, as you said, some areas that we hope we are able to work with the school system to make some changes, they are all, I think, positive steps for our school system and for our community, so I hope that everyone be receptive to listening to that, and as soon as we get this report back, we hope to schedule another public hearing with the public, and then I, after that, have a meeting with our school board to talk about some of this, some of that, it'd incorporate some of the suggestions they made at their workshop last week, so I would hope they would be very willing to sit down and work with us and maybe move this forward, because we do have to make an impact in our schools if we're going to be successful in this community. So I appreciate your comments there, thank you. Council have any further comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, North Carolina General Statute 160A, 318, 11, 3, and 6, to consult with our city attorney and for personnel issues.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.